Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the February 25th, 2020 Regular School Board Meeting to order. The first item is to accept the agenda. Madam Superintendent, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
Yes, there is. Item C3, New Administrators, add item. Item C6, Minutes of the January 28th, 2020 Work Session, add item. Item C27, Recommendations for Administrative and Instructional Personnel Actions, revise item. Item C32, Out-of-State Field Trips, add item. Item R33, Naming of the East Area Adult Cafeteria, add item. That concludes my revisions for today.
Wonderful. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda for February 25th, 2020 with the noted revisions.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. And now I would like to point a privilege, and I would like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of a dear friend and colleague who passed away yesterday morning, Mr. Jerry Miller. He was an incredible human being who worked so hard on behalf of education throughout his whole life, and he will be so sorely missed. So if you will help me, as we have a moment of silence in his honor, and we lift up his family, his sons, and everyone who touched his life, please bow with me for just a moment Thank you so much. And now I would like to ask Pastor Shirley Hayes with the St. James AME Church in Bartow to come forward to give our invocation. I'd like to ask the audience to please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Hayes?
Let us pray. Dear, wise, and loving Heavenly Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself. For the measure of health, we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your infinite and gracious nature. In the Scriptures you said we must pray for all governing authorities. Since you have entrusted those very authorities to govern our community's public schools, you have called them to promote and ensure that our school district is responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of our community. With these severe responsibilities in mind, I ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our children and faculty, a continuous desire to foster justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony and unity even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace and protection in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them tonight and for the work which lies ahead. Please give discernment and assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who are taught and who teach in the schools of Polk County. It is in the name that is above all names I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Hayes. And at this time, I would like to invite Kay Aquino, a second grader from Combi Academy of Design and Engineering, to come forward and lead us today in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anytime you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. You may be seated. Wow, Ms. Kay, you have done a great job today with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I want to know, who did you bring with you today?
I brought my wonderful parents.
Where are they?
They're sitting there.
You've got to point them out, okay. Yay.
My wonderful principal.
And where is she?
She's right here.
Yay. And who else?
And I brought my brother.
And does your brother have a name?
Yes.
What is his name?
Kendrick.
Kendrick. And where does he go to school?
Lawton Childs.
Awesome. Well, we're glad you all could be here today. Now, you have to tell me, what do you want to be when you grow up, Kay?
I want to be a veterinarian.
You do? Wow. Good for you. So that means you're pretty good in math and science, right?
Yes.
What's your favorite subject? Do you have one?
Yes, it's math.
It is math, wow. Well, you look like a very bright and wonderful young lady, and we are so blessed that you joined us today and did a great job in the pledge. So I hope you have a wonderful week and happy spring break if we don't see you before then. How's that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's give her another round of applause. Thank you so much. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our special recognitions. Ms. Byrd, would you lead us through those today?
Sure. First, I would like to ask School Board Member Sarah Fortney to step down for special recognitions. Next, I would like to ask Regional Superintendent Tammy Dawson to come forward to recognize the first JROTC Instructor of the Year.
I can have Sergeant First Class Johnson and Colonel Phelps stand up. So Board Chair Lori Cunningham, Superintendent Byrd, and Board Members. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Sergeant First Class Brian Johnson, who has been instructing JROTC since 2005. He has a master's degree in criminal justice and holds a State of Florida Department of Education Certificate for athletic coaching. He has spent the last 11 and 1/2 years at Tennerock High School in Lakeland, Florida. He opened the Junior ROTC Program in 2008 with an opening enrollment of 174 cadets as the only instructor. He is an integral part of every facet of Tennerock's operations. He currently teaches the LET 2 through 4 cadets and is responsible for many teams and after-school activities. Sergeant First Class Johnson took it upon himself to host the Area 12 Polk County District Raider Championships. He's worked from sunup until sundown to accomplish that. Due to the overwhelming success of the event, he's been asked to host this event again next year. Sergeant First Class Johnson stands out from his peers. His boundless energy, commitment to his cadets, and his dedication to his school are unmatched, and his impact on students is immeasurable. Not only does he motivate them to graduate and become outstanding citizens, students continuously come back and thank him for all of his mentorship and guidance long after they've graduated. I present to you the Polk County JROTC Instructor of the Year, Sergeant First Class Brian Johnson.
She's trying to be shy and standing aside.
He's not shy.
So first of all, we've got the Polk County School District JROTC Instructor of the Year for the 2019-20 school year, because this is our first class, Brian Johnson. And we've got a certificate here. We'll put that on the wall. It says, "Area 12 Instructor of the Year Certificate, proudly presented to Sergeant First Class, retired, Brian A. Johnson, Tennerock Senior High School, Lakeland, Florida, 25th February 2020, and signed by myself, and I'm going to get Ms. Byrd to add her signature to it."
It'll be official.
And if I need to add my signature, just...
Will you just...
Okay, sounds great. Will Chandra Hall, Director of the Office of Diversity, come forward for the Black History Month proclamation? At this time, will Billy Townsend please read the proclamation?
Whereas the recognition of Black History Month is an opportune time to salute African-Americans' achievements, sacrifices, and contributions of the past, gain insight for the present, inspire progress for the future, and teach the children about heroes of color; and whereas we celebrate Black History Month, which began on February 12th, 1926, and expanded in 1976 as part of the nation's bicentennial, in order to recognize the humanity of a people who survived against incredible historical odds, to exemplify to the world the power and audacity of the human spirit. Whereas African-American students make up 19.7% of the Polk School District and 16.8% of the Polk School District staff, where we celebrate Black History Month and the many contributions of African-American educators, educational leaders, doctors, lawyers, engineers, architects, soldiers, inventors, artists, writers, scientists, and many others who have demonstrated extraordinary courage, talent, and service to our schools as well as our community. And whereas the graduation rate for African-American students has increased from 61% to 78% in the past five years, which is indicative of our students and families accessing quality educational opportunities provided by our organization and using it as the foundation for a successful post-secondary career and quality of life, and now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Polk County, Florida, that we designate the month of February 2020 as Black History Month.
Thank you to Superintendent Byrd, Deputy Superintendent John Hill, the Board, and everyone in their respective places. As we close out Black History Month, I'm reminded of all of the many African-American educators and community members who have made contributions and left their mark right here in Polk County. And I'm sure, I might be telling some people's age, but I'm sure one day they might be considered as a part of our Black History here in Polk County. I'd be remiss if I did not mention a few of their names, so please bear with me. Mr. James Z. Stevens was the principal of Union Academy. He later had, he did a lot of work in the community, but he later had a school named after him, where I served as principal for six years. Mr. Elby Brown, we just finished up the festival on the 7th of this, the weekend of the 7th. George Goss, J.J. Corbett, Dr. Annie Roberts, Ms. Wanda Howard, George and Geraldine Watson. And to my surprise, I had planned to speak about her today, and I saw her on the news today. So Mrs. Watson was an instructor here in Bartow and a mentor of mine, and so was Mr. Watson. Clint and Deborah Wright. And last but not least, Superintendent Byrd, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize her. I grew up in Bartow, and as a little girl in Bartow, I would have never imagined me having someone that looked like me sitting in that chair. I'm just going to be honest with you. So such an inspiration and motivation. Thank you for your leadership and your inspiration. And to all of our staff members in different schools that have sent out activities that you've done throughout the month, thank you so much for sharing. Specifically, I remember Mr. Tharren Crawford, he's at Haynes City High School. He took an opportunity to make an educational video for his ball team, and he tied in some characteristics of some African-American heroes to emphasize to them the importance of having good character and being motivated and great citizens and great students. So that really inspired me, and I wanted to mention him tonight. Also, Mr. Peter McDougall, who is not here with us tonight, but I insisted that he stay at his school. His daughter is performing tonight at their African-American history program, so he's there with his daughter. She's only in pre-K once, I said, "You've got to stay." So I'll accept on his behalf. But when I did a collaboration with PR on the United as One Diversity video, he was the first to pop up and say, "I'll do it," and he stole the show. He was on that video with us. Also, he's done a lot of great things at his school and planning events for African-American History Month. And then I'd like to recognize Mrs. Janelle Lane, who is here with me tonight. Want to come on up, Ms. Lane? Ms. Lane is the dean at Alta Vista, and she stood out to me as well because she took the opportunity to make her event school-wide and not just school-wide, stakeholder-wide. They created museums in each of their classrooms, and parents as well as students had a chance to come by and learn about African-American history at their school. So I was so pleased to see that or for her to share that with me, and I invited her to come tonight so that I can present the proclamation to her. So Mrs. Janelle, would you like to say a few words? All right.
Good evening, everyone. I have to say, first giving an honor to God, who is first in my life, and it is a pleasure to be here amongst you, all beautiful people. And I went back and forth to say, what should I say? Because when I talked to Ms. Rodriguez over the phone, and she wanted to tell me that we're going to do a recognition for you, I was like, "For me? Or to the school?" And she said, "No, for you, for doing all these things." And I was like, "Wow, I never thought of, I never thought of myself. It was always the kids. I wanted the kids to see something, to experience something of my culture." And so I just thank Ms. Stewart, my principal, who, when I came to her, I said, "I want to do this. Can we do a fashion show? Can I bring some stakeholders out? Can I do this? Can I do that? Can we order Black T Street t-shirts? Can we..." And the teachers, I got all the buy-in from the teachers, and it was just so wonderful. If you guys saw the pictures from the school, it was just awesome to, what I have on, everybody wore it, almost everyone at the school. So not just my color, but you just see everyone, and it was just, it was just amazing. So I'm going to close out with something that I heard the young lady when she said the pledge. She said, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." My motto, my motto, my quote that I have been saying all along is, "Black History is not just my history," because I can't just share my history in one month anyway. But it is not just my history, it is all of our history. And again, I thank you all.
And in closing, I have to plug Mr. Charles Luster. He's the custodian over at Union Academy. But I just found out he has an African-American museum here in Bartow. He's in his new location as of two years ago. So if you get a chance, check out Lusteraw's African-American History Museum. And as Mrs. Lane said in closing, Black History is a part of our collective American history. And while we have set aside the month of February to celebrate, it is more than one month, so I'd invite you to seize opportunities to share the experiences of where we've been and where we need to go. Thank you.
This concludes the recognitions for this evening. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. The next item on our agenda is Public Comments on Agenda Items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak on an item on the If seeing none, we shall proceed. Board Members, now we need to approve two sets of minutes. Pardon? There's someone?
You said items on the agenda, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Items that we're going to be voting on that are actually on the agenda. There's a time for public comment at the very end if it's about anything else. Is your item on the agenda?
Yes.
It's on the agenda. Okay, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record, and then you will have three minutes to speak. Three minutes to speak.
Okay, I just want to make sure that this item is still on the agenda. My name is Angelina Sanchez, and the item that's on the agenda is for my termination.
I don't believe it's on the agenda tonight, no, ma'am.
It's actually on the March 17 agenda.
So it's been changed.
It's just not on our agenda this evening, so if you'd like to wait till the end of the meeting, that would be the time to address the Board.
Okay, I'll do that, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Okay. Board Members, now we need to approve two sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the January 28th, 2020 School Board Work Session. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the January 28th, 2020 School Board Work Session minutes as printed.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The second set of minutes is for the January 28th, 2020 School Board Meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the January 28th, 2020 School Board Meeting minutes as printed.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item is the approval of the Consent Agenda for February 25th, 2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the February 25th, 2020 Consent Agenda as printed.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item is our new Administrator Announcements. Mrs. Byrd, do we have any announcements today?
We do not today.
Okay, well, thank you. If we do not have any announcement, then we shall proceed. Next, we come to our regular agenda. The first item under Administration General Items is item number R33, Naming of East Area Adult Cafeteria. The Chair will entertain a motion to name the cafeteria in honor of Dr. Ray Hammer. Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
There is.
All right, Ms. Miller?
I'd like to read a letter announcing this new naming of the school or the suggestion of it, and I'm very honored to do so. I received a request from the East Area Adult School to name the cafeteria in honor of Dr. Ray Hammer, who volunteered at East Area for more than 20 years. During his career, he served on the school advisory committee as a business partner. When he retired, he took a community education computer class offered by the county's Community Education Department at East Area Adult School, and he began volunteering. He consistently volunteered two days each week, having his wife join him as well. He and his wife were involved in the United Way campaigns, the annual canned food drives, and tutoring. Mrs. Hammer still continues to volunteer. I'm very honored tonight to make this recommendation to the Superintendent and have the Board vote to name that after Dr. Ray Hammer.
Awesome, awesome. So Board Members, I have a motion and a second. You've heard Ms. Miller's recommendation. At this time, I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor of naming the cafeteria after Dr. Ray Hammer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Cochran, if you'd like to come forward with Ms. Hammer?
I've got to say just a couple things and then I'll go to term. Okay. All right. Well, it's my honor to be here tonight for the approval of the naming of the cafeteria after Dr. Ray Hammer. And I just have one real quick story. The first time that I met Ray and his wife was when I was working at Ridge Technical College, and I locked them in the building.
Okay.
And there's something I want to say about that story, which is, one, I want Ms. Byrd to know that I am very secure and locking things up. But most importantly, if I'm locking up the building, that is the end of the evening. That means everybody's gone home. I'm counting on the whole school is out. But our two volunteers were there to work with our students and...
I probably was substituting that night and came along as a volunteer.
Yeah.
So, and I was just delayed.
Yeah.
Leaving the classroom.
Well, that just shows their dedication to our students and how, and how much effort they put through, and the hundreds of lives that they touched by helping people achieve their ultimate goal and get their GED. Ms. Hammer, do you want to say anything?
Please do. Please do. Come to the podium so we can all hear.
You've talked to a class before. I know you can talk to the Board.
Well, I don't know what to say. Ray would be very honored and humbled. Learning and, was one of his passions up until probably the last week of his death, you know? He was still, had his Latin books. He was learning his, a new language for him. So he thinks, he thought everybody ought to have the same opportunity that he had. He was a great, a great believer in education.
Wonderful.
On behalf of the School Board, I'd like to give you a copy of the letter that was read.
Oh, thank you. Wonderful. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And we have some flowers for you.
School colors.
Aw.
Y'all have been so good to me.
How sweet.
Picture time.
Picture time, it's okay. Thank you so much for being here today to be recognized in honor of your husband. Board Members, our next item is under Business Services Contracts, R34, Polk State College and Travis Technical College. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agreement between Polk State College and Travis Technical College to create a pathway for students to complete technical coursework in surgical technology in order to earn an Associate's in Science degree from Polk State.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I will be abstaining from voting on this due to my relationship with Polk State College and have completed the appropriate paperwork. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you so much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And one abstention. So the motion carries then, six to one with one abstention. Under Facilities and Operations General Items, Property Management Land, we have item number R35, Acquisition of 42 Acres of Land for Future Middle School. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the 42-acre property acquisition located at the southwest corner of Berkeley and Denton in the city of Auburndale. located at the southwest corner of Berkeley and Denton in the city of Auburndale.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The next item, under Facilities and Operations, Contract Changes, Property Management, is Item R-36, Bailey Road Lease Termination. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve terminating the Bailey Road Lease Agreement in order for the school district's Facilities and Operations Department to build a new elementary school on the property.
Move approval? Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Byrd, do you have an update for us today?
I do, thank you. The next work session and board meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. The work session will be, take place in the Superintendent's Large Conference Room starting at 12:30 PM, followed by the board meeting, which will take place in the auditorium at 5:00 PM, located at 1915 South Floor Avenue, Bartow, Florida. That concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. I understand that we do not have an Attorney's Report today.
No ma'am.
And I understand that we do not have an Auditor's Report today. So, we will jump down to our Board Members' Reports. Mr. Townsend, if you'd like to go first.
Sure, a couple of quick things. First, when the work session is up on video, we have a very good exchange about the reading endorsement issue that a lot of teachers have been asking about. I think it's as good a Q&amp;A as you're going to find of anything that's written down. So, as soon as I can get that taped, I'll put it up, and I would encourage the district to do as well. I think it's very informational and helpful. Secondly, I had like six things that I wanted to talk about briefly at the work session. I got to the sixth and couldn't read my writing, but I've now been able to remember what that was. I've asked both the School Board Attorney and School Board Auditor to put together, unless the board says no, a one or two pager on what specific items ought to come before us for formal votes. I think there's been some inconsistency over the years and there are things that I think the board used to vote, to vote on in 2014 and '15, et cetera, that it's not voting on now. And as a board member, I struggle a little bit getting a sense of what should be approved administratively and what should be approved by the board. So, I'm looking forward to a little bit of an explanation on that. I think the law is confusing and open to interpretation. So, I've asked for that, no particular time period, but that's something I would like to see. And then, third, on a fun note, I got to see Sarah Fortney in action as a science teacher at the elementary last week. She's a lot better than I am. I dropped...
I hope so.
I dropped some rocks, she like crushed stuff. So, you know, it's in the excitement range, she was better. But that was a very fun night. It's a really outstanding STEM program in the evening there. That was fun to take part in and just an example of the kind of things that go on every day. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I encourage everybody to watch the work session. There was a very good presentation by HR about Kelly Services, and I know I fielded a lot of questions about substitutes, et cetera. And feel free to email me and I will send you that PowerPoint. Ms. Portius has already sent it to us electronically, as requested. I brought up LSI again and Superintendent, I just want to put that out there. Superintendent Byrd and I have spoken and we are working on things because we know it's an issue. And anyways, just wanted to say that and I appreciate Superintendent Byrd speaking with me, and I won't bring it up again. In the near future. Mr. Perone tried to answer again the steps, and I just want to clarify that is, when I say steps, I'm talking the salary steps, like for years' experience. So, I'm hoping to meet with Mr. Perone and he can explain that to me, how we put that in the beginning of the budget. On to positive things, yes. Thursday night, Winter Haven High School plays in the state semis, I believe. I can't wait to go. Are you going, Sarah Beth?
I believe so.
Okay, well, I'll see you there. All right. I love watching them play, they are so good. So, good luck. And Mr. Bridges is still working on the share table. We did have a productive meeting on that, I appreciate that. And Jenna Kazmanski, she was full of information. So, if you are one of those people that have kept talking to me about share tables, we have that ball rolling and I can get you the documentation for that. I'm not going to go through everything I've gone through, you just follow me on Facebook, you'll see it. I put pictures on there all the time. So, I did want to do a shout out, though, to HBCU Saturday had their jump off and it was well attended. Mrs. Barnes was there representing the district and those kids got help with financial applications and saw the rich tradition of sororities and fraternities in action. It was really cool. And then, we attended the St. Pete Equality Update yesterday. And if you're listening out there, if you have any GSA or diversity clubs, I would love for you to share the school name with me and I would appreciate it so we can get some feedback on what's going on in our district. Otherwise, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would like to say just a few words about Jerry Miller, and I think it was so appropriate to have that moment of silence, thank you for that. Jerry was with Public Relations with Duke Energy and he was able to help so much funding find its way into Polk County for so many things, and especially education. He was certainly a champion of education here in Polk County. He loved this county, he loved this community and so very much appreciated helping out where he could. And he's going to be sorely missed. And I just wanted to say a few words about him, and again, thank you for the moment of silence. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. February has been a busy month, I was just looking at the calendar and it seems to have flown by. But some really cool things I want to highlight. Elbert Elementary School had its Math Night on February 11th. They had, every grade level had a different math assignment in one of their classrooms. They went around and did it with their parents. Watching parents do second and third grade math is probably one of the most entertaining things because they were so frustrated that they, you know, and their kid's like, "It's easy, come on dad, figure it out, it's not that hard." But so, it was really cool getting to see the students teach their parents some of the things that they were learning in math. And then, on the 12th and 13th, I got to follow Wendy around in Tallahassee and she moves quick. I know Ms. Fortney went up with her this session as well, but she is in offices and we went to the FAD's office that she works out of and I think every other lobbyist in education in the state of Florida is just trying to figure out how to be Wendy Dodge because all of them were coming up to her saying, you know, "What was that spreadsheet that you gave on FRS? Because that's what, we want to mimic it with our numbers and show them how it's affecting us." Because she's, she really is making sure that Polk's voice is heard, but also that we're working with other districts throughout the state to show how this isn't just a Polk issue. A lot of these issues are statewide issues. And she is in the offices with legislators and making sure that things that we know that are going to be coming down the pipe are affecting us to the least of what it could be. There's a lot of language that is starting to work its way out of some of the bills that is, I think, a huge tribute to her. So, I just want to highlight all that she's doing up there because I don't think she stops moving. I was having trouble keeping up with her and I walk pretty fast. And then, on the 14th, Valentine's Day is probably one of the favorite things I've ever done as a School Board Member. I got to chaperone Lake Gibson High School's audio group going to deliver singing telegrams on Valentine's Day. We went all over the county. We also went to Plant City, which I did not realize we were going out of county. But we went and delivered to all, you know, one girl we delivered to her grandfather, who started just sobbing. So, it was really cool. We delivered a few at the district office, but they have a great group of students and they were so polite and eloquent and introduced themselves at every business and really were able to showcase some of the great things that we have happening in schools throughout our county. And then, last but not least, looking forward to this weekend, Rotary of Winter Haven is putting on Rotary Reads Day at Inwood Elementary School from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on this Saturday. So, it's, they have a basket of books for all elementary, preschool and elementary age kids. They have Rotarians that are signed up to read in different rooms. Last year, they did it at Garner. I'm not sure who had more fun, the students or the Rotarians or the Polk State basketball team that also showed up to help. But they truly had a blast. And again, it's at Inwood this Saturday morning from 10:00 AM to noon. So, and lunch will be provided. So, and that concludes my report.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
I just have a couple of things. Ms. Fortney, Mr. Hill and Ms. Byrd and I attended the LB Brown Youth Leadership Awards Program earlier this month and it was amazing to see the young people as they presented themselves and their accomplishments and where they want to be years from now. And it was just very rewarding to see that they know where they're going and they have accomplished a lot within the timeframe that they've been in high school and that we're going to be in good hands when we're no longer in our position. So, I want to congratulate all of the young people and also to thank the LB Brown Historic Board for the hard work that they do, not just on the week of the festival, but just throughout the year and their involvement in our community. And then, I believe there were at least three board members, it might have been more, that also participated in the FFA oratorical judging back maybe the first part of February. I don't remember the timeframe, but this was where a lot of the FFA students were able to come before different ones of us to present on a subject matter. And then, they got their scores and they got feedback on some things that they could improve upon. And it was just very encouraging to see them have the confidence and the ability to stand before a group of people and to present and speak. So, a lot of good things going on in our school district and personally, I'm very happy to be a part of it. And I look forward to the About Face Award that's going to be coming up within the next few days. That's a very exciting event as well. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Miller?
Madam Chair, thank you. I wanted to go back to one event that was earlier in the month. It might have been the last week of January, but I, myself, along with Ms. Cunningham and Mr. Townsend with the Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, attended the Dr. Martin Luther King Essay Contest. And not only did the kids blow us away with their essays, but the jazz band was amazing. And I want to, you know, reiterate that we have some great music programs across this district. You don't have to be at one of the magnets or the performing arts schools. A lot of our schools offer wonderful music programs I'm very appreciative of because I know that helps move kids forward and gives them something to look forward to when they come to school. I enjoyed that evening as well as other events through the month. I do have one thing coming up I wanted to make sure to share. Along with the Rotary, we also have the Kiwanis. We really appreciate the community involvement with our schools and the Kiwanis are putting together a Day Without Disability for Saturday, March 7th. It's on social media if you need to find it, but it's inviting all children and young adults and even adults with disabilities to the Bunch Family Ranch, which is in Highland City, to ride horses or just pet horses. Food and drinks are provided, lots of games. It's a day for them to enjoy themselves and look beyond their varying abilities to be with others. So, that's very important and I've added it to a few of our schools' emails so they can share. So, March 7th, that's something they will be doing from 10:00 to 3:00. I wanted to mention that we are in session right now and it's very important and I've seen a lot of community connection and commitment to following what's happening in Tallahassee and speaking to our legislators and to our local officials to kind of combine everyone together. We have a new page on our website that kind of follows what's happening as far as all the bills are going and gives you contact information for your delegation. So, I encourage you to search for that. I'll also link it to my social media so people can be involved because it's not, you know, to find out after things are happening is too late. So, we, our delegation needs to hear your voice up front and they do react and they do appreciate your input. So, I encourage all, everyone, all constituents, even if your children are not in school anymore, to be involved in the legislative process. And that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I just have one thing. I've been going around with my school visits that I started here for the spring and it's interesting, I have heard nothing but positive comments regarding our new, I don't know if it's new, but newly in place crisis team. So, a shout out to Mr. Maxwell and Mr. Butler for an incredible job that they've been doing when called out to a school. I understand it consists of the Director of PBIS, a Behavioral Specialist, a Police Officer, School Counselor, could be the School AP and/or Social Worker. And that whole team, when needed, is being asked to go out to a school to do intervention with children, particularly those that have issues that are trying to be addressed in our schools. And that's the first time, quite frankly, I'd heard that. I've heard it now from two different schools and I just thought it was noteworthy because we sit up here and we talk about how important it is to address mental health issues in our schools and to know that we've come up with this Crisis Intervention Team, as I call it, Crisis Team, made up of individuals, you know, who I just mentioned that are able to actually come out to the school and help those educators with our children. And so, I just thought that was absolutely awesome. So, I just want to give a shout out to those two and I'm sure there's many more of you listening that are part of this or have taken part in it. But from what I've heard, from my principals, it is working. It is so very much appreciated. So, thank you very much for that. I also want to give a shout out to the folks that, I know we have to do this annual survey where you have to fill in, employees have to fill in information in order to continue to receive healthcare benefits. And I don't know about the rest of you, I filled up my stuff, I uploaded everything and for the first time that I can remember, I got a letter in the mail that said, "Thank you so much for everything that you've provided. You're all set, you're dependents. We have everything in the system." So, a shout out to whoever orchestrated that because I think that's a really nice way to close the loop when you do something like that. A lot of times, you're not sure, did it upload? Did I do the right thing? Did I click on the right button? At least those of us in my generation anyways. So, it was so comforting to get a letter saying it's all been taken care of and you're all set. So, kudos to those at the school district that had them to provide a follow-up to close that loop for each employee of ours. And don't forget to get those in, I think the deadline is fast approaching. Okay. At this point in time, the next item on our agenda is public comments on items that are not on the agenda. I have a list of individuals that have signed up to speak today and please come forward as I read your name and then if you could state your name and address for the record. And as always, you will have three minutes to address the board. Let me start with Jennifer Cipriano. And after her, it looks like Dr. ... yeah. Sobowale? You'll be coming to, okay, I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. You may begin.
So, my name is Jennifer Cipriano and do I need to provide an address or just name?
If you could...
Lakeland Regional Health.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm Alicia Douglas, I'm the Trauma Program Manager for Lakeland Regional Health and can I have permission to cross the line to give some information?
Sure.
I'm Olu Sobowale, I'm the Trauma Medical Director for Lakeland Regional Health.
Hope I pronounced your name okay. Hope I pronounced your name okay.
Wasn't too bad.
Thank you.
Is that? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, Lakeland Regional Health is the state-designated trauma center for the region. We cover Highlands County, Hillsborough County, parts of Hillsborough County, Pasco, and of course, all of Polk County. And we take care of injured patients. In addition to that, we do have a robust injury prevention program, and that's kind of what we want to talk about today. Preventable death by bleeding is one of the things that we kind of worry about the most. And if we can teach the kids and the educators about something along these lines, and how to manage and take care of, again, not necessarily in a violent manner, but just about in everyday manner, we think that's something we'd like to do. I'm just going to go ahead and turn the table over to you, because I really think this is yours. But it's part of educational program that we'd like to give to school board.
So, what we've given you is a plan proposal for the Stop the Bleed Program. And so I'd like to give a little bit of background about what the course is, and then also explain kind of where it came from. The course was actually born out of the 2012 Sandy Hook Elementary School shooting, and the American College of Surgeons Committee on Trauma after that event identified the need to enhance survivability from mass casualty and active shooter events like that. The trauma program at Lakeland Regional Health has been providing this course to the community for about the last two years. We've been able to facilitate 99 courses and train over 1,700 participants within the community. So this course is growing. Just a little bit of background about what the course is. It's a one-hour program. It consists of didactic PowerPoint presentation, as well as a hands-on skill session at the end. And the whole goal of the course is, number one, teaching participants how to identify life-threatening bleeding, what does it look like? And then also, to teach three simple ways of how to control bleeding. And so we've been successful previously with community members. This course, again, is, is growing. We've been able to recently partner with a local law enforcement agency to train all of their sworn law enforcement officers, and we've seen this training in action. We've had a few patients actually come to our facility who had tourniquets applied within the field or outside of the hospital that were applied before EMS actually ever arrived. So, if I can just.
Continue. Please continue, yes.
What we teach in the course is someone can actually bleed to death in as little as three minutes. We know that the average national ambulance arrival time, so 911 call to arrival time, is seven to 10 minutes. And so the whole goal of the course is to put this training back in the hands of community members that could potentially be on scene first before an ambulance arrives. And so our goal, as a trauma center, is to provide this course to teaching staff and students within Polk County. And we would really like the opportunity to partner together to make that training move forward and be able to kind of put wheels on it.
Wonderful. Did you want to add anything?
She, she said it all.
She said it all.
They've said it all as far as just really, you know, we've seen where we've gone with the law enforcement agency. We've done that education, seen those patients come in. I think one of the, or the victims come in. One of the things that we really want to highlight is it's not the mass casualties where you're gonna see this, it's everyday things.
Sure. Accidents and things that happen. So, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, it's, it's nice that you brought this, because I actually was trained last summer by our EMT instructor, Instructor Cozy Hubbard. And we have been working with her and with our office to make sure we get Audrey, and they're looking at how to get the kits and different things too, so we can train some of our administrators in schools. Because we too recognize the importance, and trust me, Cozy, every time I see her, she mentions to me, "When are you going to get your staff trained?" So we are, so thank you for bringing this forward, and we'll make sure Dr. Stanky is back there, because I know they're actually looking at funding for the kits and everything that we're looking at for our training for the summer. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you raise your hand so they know who to talk to?
Yes.
You all see, Ms., Dr. Stanky, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to call Marvelia Castanon. Marvelia, are you here? Yes, okay. And then I have Fernando Castanon, if you'll be waiting after she's done to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can he start first?
Pardon me?
Can he start first?
Sure, absolutely.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Ms. Fortney, Ms. Miller, Ms. Byrd, fellow board members. My name is Fernando Castanon. My address is P.O. Box 95, Bartow, Florida, 33831. And I'm here tonight regarding concerns about my son's education, mistreatment, and we, I believe discrimination due to his disability. He's a 10-year-old. He attends BEA, Bartow Elementary Academy. And he's a sweet kid. He's wonderful. He's, we always brought him up to respect everybody, says, "Mr. or Miss, yes sir, no sir." And the thing concerns about his mistreatment and discrimination was because he was put on this SBRT team for no, no good reason. I'll educate the public a little bit for the people that don't know about the Student Behavior Response Team. It was brought about by the horrific Marjory Stoneman Douglas School Shooting, titled by the same name, which was a law passed by Florida, called Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. And this team, Student Behavior Response Team, otherwise SBRT, is assigned to less than 1% of Polk County school students who exhibit violent or suicidal behavior. I assure you that our son, who is assigned to this SBRT team, without our knowledge, has no tendencies, violent, suicidal, or otherwise. My wife and I believe the administration had her son assigned to this team to try to remove him from Bartow Elementary Academy, and have him placed in a confined unit with severely disabled students. Now, he is autistic. He's been diagnosed with autism, with, on the spectrum, mild to moderate. He can communicate, see and hear very well. He's intelligent, earning straight A's this past semester. But I, we believe Bartow Elementary Academy is sending this message that he does not belong. And it's a bold statement, and it's a bold, because it's, it's not bold if you see it from our eyes, because it's been done before. We filed due process, and we won, and the state found us in our favor. We, we sent several emails to Polk County school personnel, and we have yet to receive a clear answer on why our son was labeled as part of this 1% of violence and suicidal students in Polk County.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Castanon, would you like to come forward to speak?
Marvelia Castanon. P.O. Box 985, Bartow, Florida. While the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act is in place to protect students and to help identify mental health concerns early on, the situation caused by Bartow Elementary Academy is a clear abuse of power. While I commend all of you for trying to make Polk County schools safer, I'm here to tell you that your plan is flawed. It's flawed because instead of keeping my child safe at Bartow Elementary Academy, my child has been maliciously labeled as one of the less than 1% of Polk County students that has profound behavioral problems. You have given Bartow Elementary Academy's administration the power to harm an innocent child. You've allowed a school leader to utilize her position of power and connectivity to the district-level administration to discriminate against a child with a disability and his parents. This has impacted my son's ability to receive FAP, a free and appropriate public education at Bartow Elementary Academy. The only reason we even found out that Bartow Elementary Academy had requested support is because Tanya Adams spoke up during our last PBIP meeting, when we questioned why they wanted to conduct an FBA. They stated there had been a change in behavior, and that's why they wanted an FBA. When we asked for clarification, Tanya Adams explained that she had received a request for support from Bartow Elementary Academy due to aggressive behavior towards adults. We specifically asked which individuals reported aggression, and why weren't we notified. Tanya Adams would not give us the names of the individuals that made those allegations. Dr. Satchel Carter chimed in that it was a school and team decision back in October. She said that the behaviors didn't necessarily have to be aggressive. I corrected her by clarifying that Tanya Adams had specifically said Bartow Elementary Academy had reported aggression. We asked them why administration hadn't notified us of any issues. The administration in the room, Dr. Tracy Nelson, did not reply to any of our questions. We asked for detailed information about the supposed incidents, which they could not recall. My husband has the meeting notes from the, our PBIP meeting on January 31st that clearly state, "No one could recall any names or instances where our son was aggressive." This statement was signed by his three classroom teachers, Bartow Elementary Academy's Principal, Dr. Tracy Nelson, two occupational therapists, his speech pathologist, his paraprofessional, his ESE teacher, senior manager, Dr. Satchel Carter, ESE Director Diane Taylor, and the staffing specialist. We've asked you via email which administrator contacted Brett Butler and requested support. Was it Dr. Tracy Nelson, or was it Nikki Jones? We've asked you to inform us of what exactly was shared via telephone with Brett Butler by Bartow Elementary Academy's administration that would cause Brett Butler to believe that our son needed an SBRT. We've asked for detailed information that was shared, and we have not received detailed information. So what are y'all hiding? Because as far as I'm concerned, that statement right there says, "Students first." My child has not been put first. Is it because he's disabled?
Thank you, Ms. Castanon.
We have staff in the back. Dr. Stanky is, is waiting.
Oh, Dr. Stanky's there.
Yes, she's right there.
If you'll meet with Ms., Dr. Stanky, to discuss what you've brought up tonight, we would appreciate it.
Probably need to be a regional too, right? I mean, wouldn't.
That's up to Superintendent. She said Dr. Stanky.
Stanky's there, yes.
The next person I'd like to call forward is Angenetta Sanchez? I hope I pronounced that correctly.
That's fine.
Come on forward if you'll state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Okay, my name is Angenetta Sanchez, and my address is 751 Gray Street, Haynes City, Florida. I just want to say that I came here for one reason, but as I've been sitting here and hearing all the wonderful things that taken, that are taking place in this county, I'm just elated to see, you know, all the recognitions that have taken place here today. Janelle Lane, I know her. Our daughters are friends. Mr. McDougall, he and I used to work together. And so this is really, like, giving me an eye-opener, so that I'm gonna make sure that, you know, the next time I attend this board meeting, I pray that it's for, you know, something as positive as that. And I did see Ms. Fortney this weekend at the HBCU jump-off over in Lakeland, and they introduced her as one who is concerned about the students and making sure that they get fair treatment. And I remember hearing Ms. Kay talk about, one time, that she was doing some forums, hearing, you know, the concerns of the people. So, that's awesome. So, the reason I'm here, I'll talk about that some other time, but I just wanted to commend you guys on everything that I've heard today. So, it's awesome to hear that Polk County's doing great things. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you so much. Next, I have Joe Williams. Is Mr. Williams here?
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna speak.
Not gonna speak. Okay, sir, thank you. Next, I have Kareem Smith. Is Mr. Smith here this evening? Okay. Next, I have Pam Merritt.
My name's Pamela Merritt. My address is 2055 South Floral Ave, in Bartow. And I am here in support of teachers whose classrooms have become dumping grounds for students who have no choice. Teachers who must be certified to teach a subject are now expected to be behavioral therapists, and students with disabilities in general education classroom. And disruptive behavior challenges the teacher's authority and creates tension in the classroom, violating the rights of the students and pushing academic achievement to the background. Four decades ago, before the number of violent disruptive students increased, our federal government decided students with physical and mental disabilities would receive free public academic education in the same classrooms as regular students. Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, Section 504, mainstreaming, which is now called inclusion, has progressed to the point where now, when school districts have lack of support staff to manage disruptive disobedient students, everyone else's academic education is pulled down, along with district test scores. These students would be better removed from the academic classroom to a supervised self-contained classroom or resource room with trained staff to monitor behavior patterns and give all students the best possible education. Teachers have the authority to remove a student from the classroom, and it is covered in the Teachers' Collective Bargaining Agreement 10.4-3. Pursuant to Florida Statute 1003.32, Subsections 4, 5, and 6, the statute is outlined in detail in the School Board of Polk County Bylaws and Policies, and the Polk County Public School Code of Student Conduct, which I have read. However, after months of paperwork, disruptive students are left in the general classroom, and everyone loses. There is no consequence, therefore, there is no change. As the population of Polk County is predicted to increase to a million by the year 2025, and our school district is looking to build new schools to accommodate an extra 50,000 students, which would make our student population 150,000 students, Polk County may want to look into building IDEA schools, as they have in Texas, Louisiana, and now Tampa, giving all students academic education with staff trained to meet their different learning needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt.
Yeah, I think this is kind of what I've been trying to say in board meetings about behaviors, and, and I know Ms. Miller's talked about lack of supports in classrooms and stuff, and, and our teachers are walking out and suffering because of it.
It makes it very stressful for teachers when they get home.
I want to remind my colleague, Ms. Fortney, that the reason we're having these issues is a support-based issue. Segregating children, you know, is not, it doesn't help anyone. We are losing the battle because we don't have supports in the classroom. So, you know, it's not only illegal, but it shows that unfortunately, it's, you know, if you have a child with a label in your classroom now, this might be the, be your foresight of what the, what your experience will be, and it should not be that way. It's about supports.
That's what I just said.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, I'd just add, if you, the, the issue that came just before this is the opposite flip, flip side of what was just talked, talked about. This is the most difficult thing in education. It's the, the, it's important that we don't conflate behavior with, with ESE, because ESE is a very, very large universe, and every child is an individual, and none of these, these issues are easy. They're compounded by choice, by schools that don't have to keep kids and schools that do. And we would all do well, I think, to try to treat these, these situations as individually as we can, while recognizing that behavior is an issue. And so is the commitment to serve all kids. And there is not an easy a, 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 answer to it. There wasn't an easy answer to it 20 year, years, years ago. There won't be one 20 years from now. But it's important that we don't turn against each other on it, and that we all work, work together and think through it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have talked extensively about this situation over the past few months, in particular. And the real problem is, beginning in the mid-'70s, federal government started implementing a series of laws, as you've pointed out, that introduced, and I use the word "non-traditional students" into the traditional classroom setting. And, and the real challenge we have is that, as And the real challenge we have is that, as Ms. Miller has said, our teachers are not being properly supported. The federal government funds about 16% of the cost of those programs. They expect the state to fund the rest of it, and the state simply hasn't done that. To make matters worse, the state has continued to push unfunded mandates down on local districts so that it makes it incredibly difficult for us to provide those supports. And we're going to do, we're going to do what we can as a board and as a local school district to find some help for our teachers and to provide some of those supports. We've been discussing a possible referendum, but that's really the core issue. We just haven't been able to provide the supports because we don't have the funding that we need from our federal and state government. So it is problematic, and it's unfortunate, and it's the right thing to do, to provide a quality education to all of our students, but we all know that that requires additional funding. It's well documented, and those funds just haven't been forthcoming, and that's the real problem that we face. So thank you for bringing that forward.
If I may make one comment about the funding. When I was with the school district in Arabian, New York, a minimum-security prison received more funding and had better athletic rooms and fields than our school did, and that really made us mad. Where does the funding come to upgrade prisons and yet not upgrade our school system?
Thank you, Ms. Merritt, and thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to come forward to speak? Mr. Milhorne?
Good evening. Larry Milhorne, President, ask me local 2227. I was in the work session this afternoon, and I heard what Ms. Fortney said about the steps, and I heard what Mr. Perone said about the steps. The teachers' pay and the people I represent's pay is actually different. Yes, there is things that the state mandates you do for the teachers, but my people that I represent, they were told that they get to move their steps when they were hired. They don't get to move their steps. They... I have to go to the bargaining table and try to get their steps for them, and that takes money away from everybody else. These steps should be budgeted, like Ms. Fortney said. These are not raises, as Mr. Wilson has said one time before. These are things people earn. You ask them to do a certain job, and they will move forward with that. If we're not going to do that for our employees, why do we even have a step system? Why don't we turn it around and just go ahead and start everybody off at the top? That way, there's no confusion. When I go to the bargaining table, I bargain for raises and raises only, not steps that people earn. They do their job every day. We're shorthanded, and they're still doing their job every day, but they don't get their steps. This has to be fixed somehow. I don't know the solution, but the first thing is in the budget. We need a budget for steps, whether I got a bargain form or whatever. It needs to be put in the budget upfront. We need to do that. We hired three carpenters. We had some tests, and we hired three carpenters. We had a test for electricians. One electrician passed the test. He's not coming to work for us, and the reason for that is, he said he would have to take a $700-a-month pay cut plus another $600-a-month cut to insure his wife. We're not going to hire employees, not quality employees, not like this. We've got to fix this. And when they find out they're not going to move ahead, they leave. If we do hire somebody and they don't get that step they were promised, or they earned, they don't even have to be promised. They earned that step, and they don't get to move forward with a step, they leave us. They go somewhere else where people make them feel appreciated by giving them what they were told they were going to get. In this district, we need to figure out a way to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milhorne. Anyone else like to come forward? Bishop Mincy? Ms. Yocum, go ahead. Come on down.
Stephanie Yocum, President of Polk Education Association. So I want to share with you a story today that I heard last week from a teacher. On February 14th, our teachers had Staff Development Day, and I'm not sure what happened at all those schools, but the teacher that shared the story with me, they were doing a lot of data analysis, preparing for their spring test, and they were all given a spreadsheet of their students, but some of the students were missing on that spreadsheet because they were only looking at students who counted for their school grade looking forward. And so whether the intent was there or not, those teachers felt like that the kids that came in that weren't in the both FTE counts didn't matter. And I think that I wanted to share that story with you as we need to be in this together because the test-and-punish system doesn't work. We must... We need your help in standing together with our legislature and saying that this is not how we educate our kids. Every kid matters. All students should be first, not just the kids that count for our school grade. And whether that intent was really there or not, that's what the teachers felt, was that some kids mattered and some kids didn't. And so I just wanted to share that with you as we... This is why we rally. This is why we fight, because the humanity of our system is on the line here. And providing our students with the humane education versus this test-and-punish system that we're currently operating under, something has to change. So I wanted to share that with you. I wanted to share that with the public because sometimes, you know, parents don't see that part, and teachers don't share that part. And I think that our public needs to be aware that this isn't necessarily something that is ill-intent with our principals or our district, but it's the game that we have to play to get the grade that Tallahassee is going to give us. And so that we're playing in this structure and that we somehow have to find a way to break the wheel. And that's not going to happen if we don't share these stories with our parents and with our community, because they need to see the ugly side of this, that we have to play a numbers game to keep our B district, right? We have to play a numbers game with the DOE to have our schools not be in turnaround status. And so we need to make sure that they all understand what's going on and what's at stake. So that's why I wanted to share that story today.
Before you leave the podium, don't you have some good news?
Oh, yes. I will share this news, yes.
Please.
We have...
Give her extra time to share the good news.
Thank you. I will share some good news.
Yeah, I'm so excited.
We have an amazing tentatively-agree-to contract for our teachers. It will be... It's out for review now. You can go to polkia.org. It's under the contracts where you can review the tentative agreement. Ballots will be delivered to our teachers Monday, the 2nd, and Tuesday, the 3rd of March. So we should be counting ballots on March 18th, on that Wednesday. So we were able to do a pretty quick turnaround. We are enthusiastic about this contract. We got a lot of planning time back, a lot of autonomy that our teachers were wanting and needing with lesson plans. So we're very excited about this. We are encouraging a yes vote very enthusiastically, and so we are hoping to bring you a ratified contract sometime in April.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Yocum. Yay. And I just want to add to that. I know at work session that day, or that Tuesday prior to the bargaining session on Thursday, you know, all the board members felt very strongly that we asked our staff and our bargaining PEA group to sharpen their pencils and truly think about the teachers and staff and come together and make this work, and I'm so pleased and happy that we're to the point that we are. So thank you both on our district bargaining side and with PEA and Ms. Yocum and her team for working as hard as they did to come to this agreement. So we're very excited, and we'll see what the results look like. So thank you so much for sharing that with everybody. Bishop Mincy, would you like to come up now? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Fortney, go ahead.
Yeah, I attended the rally in Tally as a follow-up. Rally in Orlando from Tally to wherever. I know we've rallied everywhere. But, you know, the people that spoke at that rally echoed what Ms. Yocum just said. It is a numbers game, and it is about to get worse. If you look at some of that legislation coming down, the year turnaround, take our buildings, somebody's got to stand up, speak up, if we want public schools to keep doing it better. And I urge you, if you're watching this, send mail, send email, make phone calls. We cannot survive this next round of punishment. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Bishop Mincy?
All right. Bishop Mincy, we got to go. Short session tonight.
It's what?
But we... I just was listening, and I do appreciate everybody in this district, as I oftentimes say. But there are some things that I'd like to say to all of us, especially board members. Number one, we are the... You are the cheerleaders of the district. You all are. Every one of y'all seven has got to put positive thoughts in every member, family, and whoever in the district. You have to put some positive stuff. All of them people that you associate with that putting out negative stuff, you have to tell them, stop it. We don't need to hear it. We don't want it because we are striving to do better than this. We are striving to do better. Anytime we allow negative stuff to filtrate into our minds and our thought pattern, then it's going to get somewhere else, and that's why we are failing in other areas because we allowing these negative thoughts to pour into us. That's got to be over with. We got to see, we got a team of people here that is putting for 110%. The teachers, the principals, the superintendent, all of us there. I'm so happy, I wanted to shout when the report came, amen, that there was nothing wrong with the finances. I said, hallelujah. Nobody can go out and say there's nothing wrong with the finances. They've got a good, clean report, and that's wonderful, and that's good news. We need to keep that kind of stuff going because the enemy is trying his best to drive wages. I listen to what you all are saying. Tallahassee is... We got a problem. We got problems. We got a problem. But you know what? We got to remember this. We got to respect Tallahassee. They are the people that made the laws. The only way we change them is vote them out. Vote them out. You all that talk we do, talk to Jesus, come back. We ain't going to be done nothing, but what we need to do, vote them out. We allowed this to happen in this state. Two times Governor Scott stuck it in you, and y'all swallowed it and grasped it and went along with it. It's okay. Same stuff come back, these same people come back in another shape and another form, and they do the same thing over and over. And it's sad to say, the teachers and all of Mr. Milhorne's peoples are suffering because the people, as that lady said back there, they put millions of dollars in a prison. And you know why they're putting it? Because they're putting money in their pockets, their pockets being lined. All these privatized prisons and all these charter schools that they're getting all this money, they're going to their pockets. They ain't studying about the children and the teachers and nobody else. So we need to see the importance of just what somebody said coming together. And the next rally, let's go on a day when there is no school going on. And the legislative body is there. Let's go and they be... Let's only go in their offices and talk to them and say, sir, we here because we want you all to make a change. Or ma'am, we here because we want you to... Let's go on a day... Let's ask the district for a day, the next session, when they can have a workday, the teachers can have a workday. Let's go on that kind of thing.
Yes, that's been proposed by one of our board members. Ms. Miller brought that up for next year. Yay. We just have to get the calendar committee to get together and make that change. I thought that was great. Okay. Anyone else want to come down and address the board? Nope, seeing nobody. The next order of business is adjournment. Board members, there being no further business, this meeting of the Polk County School Board is adjourned.